All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Time is 7:01 and I will call this meeting to order. Secretary Cox, will you please take roll call for us?
Zach Bishop.
Here.
Bill Cox here. John DeBolt.
Here.
Tanya Delong. Rick Holmes.
Here.
Chris Manchester.
Here.
Chris Newman.
Here.
Matt Shinkle.
Present.
Tom Rattella.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will review our agenda for this evening and seek approval for our agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda for tonight? Not? Call for a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
It's a member Cox. Moved it, approved the agenda from last month?
Thank you.
Member Newman, all support?
Motion by Cox, support by Newman. All in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? Thank you. And next item is our citizen comments. Do we have anyone online joining us, Mr. Mallory?
We do have a person online. If they do wish to speak, it would just wave your cursor over the computer screen, you'll see down below a button that would say raise hand. And you just click on that and then we can patch you through. So we'll give it a co- a minute here to see if that hand raise button is clicked. So I do not see that being raised. I'll bring it back to the agenda and then I'll click back to see if the hand raises at some point. But we'll go ahead and I'll share the agenda again.
All right. Having no citizen comments, we will move on to approval of minutes from our October meeting. Just again, we did not have a November meeting this year. Any questions on the October meeting minutes? Okay. Call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October.
This is a member Rattella. I moved at the October 10th, 2022 minutes. We approved as the minute.
Motion by Rattella.
Holmes, I second.
Support by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? All right, motion carried. Next is a village manager report with multiple items. So, Andrew Mallory, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, one item that we'll add as well, and it's just informational, but next Monday at the council meeting, all the dates for 2023, for all the governmental meetings are being recommended. And we're recommending the council stay with the Monday formats and the Planning Commission, DDA, stays on the second Monday at seven o'clock. Then it's, everyone knows, each Monday, at least for four weeks of the month, there'd be a governmental meeting at this, this location. Well, the first, as you can see, is Christmas in the village. And we're just absolutely pleased, proud, and happy at the event that took place Saturday night, right? Chief Sanderson, myself, are estimating that there was upwards of 7,000 people through the village in the totality of the day. And vast, vast majority stayed through the parade. And we really highlight when you see some of the pictures of the event, I'd encourage people to, to, to look at those pictures and the amount of families with young children, I'll say under the age of 12, 13 years old, all the way down that participated in the event. And the smiles on their faces and it just on a small, any size community, but our community, I heard from our common theme, from longtime residents, that they've never seen downtown with as many people. And that includes the car show. On an economic impact, I have had contact with the retail owners in our downtown and to the retail shop. They literally want by a vast, vast majority, monthly festivals because of the economic impact and part of our goal of filling the stores downtown. But not only filling them, keeping them sustainable. So, you know, big praise, you put that many people in any event. And the work that DPW, our police department, did that night. There was no incidents in the town. That just really, really was, went exceptionally well. I worked with DPW this morning. We came in and went the entire parade route and just, you know, making sure deep cleaning took place in that. And I was very pleased with the limited amount of impact that it had on, on the community in that. So be happy to answer any questions. I don't want to take up a ton of time. But for those that are participated or watched, we had put three cameras on the parade route. So people at home, I got messages from Phoenix, Arizona, Florida, North Carolina thanking us for doing that. We added the tents downtown this year with, with Christmas movies for kids playing and of course, our visitors from the North Pole. As well as highlighting the investment made in Oswalt Park and having that used with the amount of people throughout the night. So I'll pause there, be happy to answer any questions anyone might have on that event.
This is member Rattella. Jim, two things. I did visit some folks in the farmer's markets and folks that I've met from other activities. And they were very pleased with the amount of customers that they were getting in there. So kudos again to the folks that do this for the, the village. The other thing was the historic village had the depot museum open. And we were hoping that, I know the tractor with one of the hay wagons went through that area, but nobody stopped. And we were hoping that that would be part of the agenda, that whatever wagons went through would stop, drop people off and pick people up. And I don't know what the routes that the horse drawn wagons had, but I did see the tractor going through there to look at Christmas card lane. Bottom line is, we'd like to work it out next year where we can get stops, drop off and pick up people at the, the depot museum. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we had the tractor go through there, but they probably just didn't stop to drop people off. But that's certainly, we'll make note of that. We're going to meet here. John and I talked this morning. We'll have kind of a debriefing session. And that's how we do it each year. And that's what led to tents this year and the like. So that's a, a good suggestion. And we'll make sure that it's incorporated.
Jim, quick question on just kind of the aftermath of that big event. Has there been a debrief meeting yet? If so, what were the, kind of the major takeaways for future planning?
Well, it, the, with the volunteers, there has not been. And with staff, I'll have our directors meeting on Wednesday morning. But I've talked individually to the DPW director as well as the police chief on, on different aspects. And like this, you know, the, the pre-planning that went into it. And then it's, it's no different than an active living thing. You take the pitches that are thrown to you as much as you're prepared. We had a snow event and freezing that was, hit us at about midnight. So myself and DPW came in a little after 4:00 AM to, to not only on downtown, but throughout the village on all major roads. We put salt down and then concentrated downtown. It's a less impacting on the cement salt, but we also, all the benches that are downtown and in the parks. Made sure that, that we use blowers and brooms to get all those cleaned off and, and prepped up. Kept ha- I stayed with, with a couple of members of DPW to continue to prep for when the tents arrived in that. We had always planned on three DPW members being there up until nine at night to, we had learned through the October, August and October. When you put that amount of people downtown. We started with one, I think in August, and now we're up to three, where, you know, DPW members to keep up empty and trash. That type of activities also that goes beyond the public's eye probably, but with some incidents across the nation. We quadrupled barricades in majority, you know, the major intersections as well as putting large vehicles that are village assets to double, to make sure that we protect people as, as much as possible. So to put those in place. We had 25 extra trash cans in the downtown area. So some of our conversation, it'll all be formalized here in the next 30 to 45 days internally. So we can keep those historical notes alive. I meet, I meet with tomorrow at 8:30 on, on different suggestions. But I know right now we'll move to, to probably 50 of the largest rubber made temporary trash cans for these festival events. The ones that, the 25 that were purchased will just expand. So it goes further out of the core downtown. Same DPW, you know, worked the events and, and focus where they, they were and, and that. So those are some of the immediate items for, for improvement. And I just stressed with the internal staff, you know, we didn't highlight the fact that everyone had come in at four in the morning to start prepping. You know, with, with the added, added, added of snow event and that. So I'm pretty, pretty darn proud of, of DPW and the police department and, and how they adapted. On paper, we were not going to shut down Prairie Street until I think 3:00 PM. And due to the amount of people that were in town by that and, and our visitors from the North Pole said they had as men, the most amount of kids ever come visit them. We got concerned where the line was going. And so, so we adapted and shut down Prairie Street. And, and it helped having, you know, the police, the entire department was in, including Chief Sanderson. So, so those were some things that, that took place. But again, we put that many people in our downtown. Didn't take any criminal complaints, no fights, nothing to do with excessive alcohol. It was very arguably a complete family event. So, other questions? Super. And we're looking forward to, to, it's our belief that having these events will make Vicksburg, you know, a destination community. And, and what you get with a destination community is retail shops that are sustainable and impactful and, and which leads us to the second, we are going to have a February festival. And the Chamber has kind of reorganized and are very, very excited. And, and we as staff are excited. I know the council is. They, this event was approved unanimously by the council. So on February 11th, calling it the Vicksburg, the Iceberg Festival. So a component of it, and there'll be more details here in the next few weeks, the Chamber releases. But we'll have ice sculptures. You'll see later on, we're asking for approval. Some DDA funds to assist in that with the goal being those attractions will get people walking through our downtown, i.e. visiting these retail establishments. And we've kind of communicated to the business owners, hey, our goal is to get people to come downtown. Their expectation is to bring them back. So their service, their products that, that we're proud of, well, we're confident will bring people back after they're, they're exposed to what we have offered here in Vicksburg. So I'll pause there if anyone has questions about the Iceberg Festival coming February 11th.
But. Just add a quick comment. I'm aware of a community in Wisconsin that has a similar festival and it is a destination. It draws in thousands of people. It's a big competition. It's great for downtown businesses. I think this is a great idea and really looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah, and a shout out goes out to the Chamber and, and, and the group and their leadership that, that, you know, the Chamber's been absent for the last few years. And it's, it's exciting to, to have a group taking this on and the businesses are having, I believe it's a, a competition centered around grilled cheese sandwiches and, and the like, but they'll, I'll let all the exciting details come from them. But the, it'll be, the village, it'll be in lockstep with them. One of the items as well, and as I'm thinking out loud that we talked about today, that we'll incorporate in February is through our contracts with, with Portageons, we'll, we'll bring in some Portageons. That's another thing in the festival that we're, we're learning. So that, that'll be a part of, of February for sure. So again, I'll pause if people have questions.
Outside of kind of financial support, what other handshake relationships do we have from a DDA and Chamber standpoint for this festival?
Well, it's, you know, the request under the DDA, what that would fund is six to eight pre-made ice sculptures of different designs that we can put in our downtown. The Chamber is paying for a live one to be made by the person and handling a lot of the other expenses. But I, I, again, the Chamber was non-existent in my world. I hadn't been contacted by anyone in the Chamber in over three years. I'd made several attempts to contact. So that is what it is. But I went to the Chamber meeting, the last meeting that they had and plan on attending future ones to make sure the appropriate partnership is there. And again, it, it can only be a win-win because, because it's getting these retail establishments and people in our downtown and using our downtown. So I'm all for it. I'm excited.
Member Bishop here. So I actually sit on the Chamber of Commerce board. To piggyback what, what you said, a lot of the ideas that have come up in our meetings are taken from the Ice Breaking Festival of South Hayman. So competitions, community involvement, everybody's super excited. And as Jim said, we have got a lot of good feedback from not only just the restaurants and bars in town, but even some of the other shops to do a grilled cheese and soup competition that, that will be judged in a few different ways. It's going to be a good time. As a, as a, as a member of both the Chamber and the Planning Commission, the fact that, you know, Jim and the DDA is willing to help with funds is excellent. And I, more so from a, from a turnout standpoint, we plan to make a map that we can distribute online to people so that they can get a gist of where they can go for different events. And on that, we will have landmarks, if you will, if the funds are approved, to have these separate statues that are placed out. And we think people are really going to love to see that, especially the younger generation, hopefully, you know, as good of a turnout as Christmas in the village was. So that is our plan and we actually will meet tomorrow. So if anybody would like to follow up, you know, Wednesday or Thursday with questions or anything, we'd all be more than happy to talk.
I, if Chris helped me with this, but I could have sworn that we've had ice sculptures in the past, like the chili cook-off. The only reason I remember them is because it was one of the warmest winters and they all were melting very, very quickly. And hopefully that's not the case this year. And Zach, I guess I'd speak directly to you because you're with the Chamber and that is what is, I understand, you know, Christmas in the Village to draw is the parade. That's, that's what it is. And then there's the pub crawl afterwards, but it's really the parade. So it's that singular event.
Around a schedule that we put together because that same, that same sentiment has already come up in a previous meeting of how do we get it out to people? What is going on and what places and at what time? So that is a good piece of advice and I do appreciate that. And we are going to try and mitigate the confusion of what's going on where. And as far as that goes, I, I believe, being able to work so closely with the village, we will be able to use their platform as well to broadcast that information to not only you guys on the Planning Commission, but of the DDA, the council, and everybody socially who follows, you know, all of those platforms.
Yeah, one thing we did this year, again, it comes from you know, building each year and making Christmas in the village better, we took our social media platforms and boosted it. So we utilized some of the fundraising money for Christmas in the village to expand the advertising outside of the village. And we reached about 13,000 people through that. Other things, you know, we're going to use for the Iceberg Festival. You'll see here for about the next month, the, the bifold sign in Oswalt Park that we're kind of using for community announcements due to foot traffic will be on the master plan that we'll talk about. But a month before this event, we'll have through our, our contacts signs made up that been sit for 30 days in Oswalt Park about what's going to come and, and all of that. And again, the goal is to get people to come to downtown Vicksburg, if simply out of curiosity. I don't know how many community events are going on February 11th, but we how many community events are going on February eleventh, but we know this one's going on. So it'll give them a reason. Uh, I could anticipate a a tent being off Oswalt Park. Again, we now have, we know these heaters that were purchased with DDA funds can be used in events like this to to heat that tent and keep people in our downtown and and, you know, using their hard-earned dollars and investing in the in our retail shops.
Great. Uh, Jim, why don't we move on to the pavilion across from the Clark Park?
Yeah, those and but I didn't know because we didn't meet in November, but both of those items have been completed. Um, and uh, big thanks to Mike Fredericks and uh his team uh that have both of those up. So I wanted to make sure um with not meeting in November to to make sure that you're aware that both of those have been uh completed.
Mr. Mallory, if I may, uh, this somewhat related, is there a a final update on the Washington Street Lift Station part of that entire project?
Yeah, the Washington Street Lift Station is on a supply chain issue, one of the critical components that I think we're in our fifteenth month of waiting for the specialized part to arrive. Uh, one thing, we had communication with the contractor due to um, right now it's looking like, so we have a realistic expectation. We've moved that contract to, it's not finalized yet, but our discussions are to the end of March of twenty-three with with some assurances. If it's not completed by a certain date, that um, there there would be a uh consequences to that. So.
Thank you.
I can, I can share with you that um we're withholding close to a million dollars till that job's complete. So they have a fairly significant incentive, uh regardless of the part of our contracts to have it be complete. So.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is um presentation from McKenna Associates and Mr. Kyle Mucha. Welcome back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, yep. Age structure, median age of the village is thirty-five point four years. The most consistency of that would be considered the family farming, which is a twenty to forty-four-year-old group, which makes up roughly forty percent of those itself, hopefully followed by school ages and then mature families, which are forty-five to sixty-four, and then the rest of the gap on that. Education, um, we're ahead of the curve with county, that's wonderful. Housing characteristics, within the village itself, we have roughly thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred households, depending on what data we use, the U S Census of twenty-twenty, where it's off of the American Community Survey, HBS data, and that's more of a smaller sample size.
What was that for, Kyle?
That was housing, houses.
Oh, number houses, okay.
Specifically, we found that six hundred fifteen hundred, oh, housing units in the village, I believe that also includes rentals, that will include rentals as well. Of that, based on the census data, owner occupied in twenty-twenty was about seventy-nine percent, about twenty-one percent of the property. Age of housing stock, that's a front one for us to look at too. The majority of our housing stocks in the village is classified as being built built between nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety-nine, or about two hundred and seventy-two units, or about twenty percent. The next one would be two thousand, two thousand nine, at nineteen point seven percent, followed area afterwards between nineteen sixty and nineteen seventy-nine. Based on what the census has for us, we've seen about sixty-eight units from twenty-fourteen onwards, that being close to me, watching all the building going on, and yeah, I don't need to really go into what the census data has for us, so that might be.
I think that's incorrect. It's probably what they could find. Um, so I want to see when we look at the district unit, if you're concerned, housing type, most of our housing types are single-family, peat asphalt, that means it's not too much, it's not a part of buildings, but it's a in the lock style. And that accounts for eighty-one percent of the building, single-family.
County for comparison is that.
Hey, Kyle, hold on a second. We're gonna make sure that.
So again, Village Vicksburg, eighty-one point six percent, single-family. Brady Township as comparison is ninety-six percent. Schoolcraft Township is eighty-one and a half. Um, the county is at sixty-four percent for single-family. Um, and then just for future reference too, I'll provide all this stuff to Village Manager Mallory. We'll get you some of the background as well. Um, so you have that in front of you. I didn't want to kill trees, preparing it off for you guys, so we'll just do that in email. And this is all important stuff as we look at the next five to ten years, kind of how this will impact us as we plan for the village. Um, median household income is about fifty-six thousand dollars. That's below the county average of fifty-eight. Um, Brady Township was at eighty-two. Schoolcraft Township was at sixty-two. State of Michigan's at fifty-nine thousand. So. And Minister Newman, you might like this. Um, the based on the economic factors, employment sectors, again, this is U S Census data, uh, twenty-four percent is in manufacturing for the area. Our next highest category was education and healthcare at twenty-one percent. And then from there, we're at almost a split between construction and retail trade. And then it, Peter figures out after that. So. Lot of stuff I'm regurgitating to you currently, but this will be in one of the first chapters of our master plan. This helps set the stage for not only municipal leadership, Planning Commission as things come along for implementation, but also anyone interested in the community. They want to know what the demographics are so their market, they can track that. That's why this is important for us. Past month, too, the past few weeks, we've been collecting a lot of participation in um information as well. We have an online survey that has gone out. We've seen fifty-six responses so far to that. We've also held three public open houses where we had probably estimated sixty people show up. So a total response rate so far of a hundred and ten. Um, I'm working with village staff on increasing that, uh, probably turn of the year to see if we can't get some more participation out there as well. That's still in the works. So fifty-six uh response rates online so far through Survey Monkey, about sixty uh members of the public residents and business owners in our three public open house engagement events. Those were held over the past few weeks. Uh, again, we are working with village staff to um look at expanding those engagement options and what that will look like. Um, and as we go forward, the online survey will be more in-depth than whatever our public open houses are. We'll talk on questions of, do you live in the village? What are some aspects you enjoy the village? Are there aspects that you think need improvement? Um, based on so far our public engagement, some of the high-level overview we have has been really positive feedback. We haven't had anything too critical um in the sense of negatives. A lot of the comments we have, we feel we can expand upon in the sense of residents are asking for non-motorized trails. So as we look at our master plan, how does that integrate into future development within the village? Uh, another option we had too is we want to expand retail components, which is already part of the goals and objectives of the current master plan. We've seen residents indicate that they like the small-town feel, the cultural events, the downtown businesses, that it is a destination. Um, so that's where we stand so far on the public engagement side. I'll pause pause there for any questions from the commission on public engagement or demographics so far.
Kyle is, um, this is the first time I've had an opportunity to go through something like this. So when you, we go through the initial numbers of the limited participation, I don't know really how to compare that to anything, but from McKenna's perspective, is that is that reflective of what you see in other ones where initially it's slow, but it does pick up over time? I'm just curious if you have any comments about that.
Every community will be different in that, and we need to set benchmarks, not only through the Planning Commission, what they think is acceptable, but also through village staff and village council, what is a good response rate. Um, you know, on statistic courses, you hear that to make any kind of analysis, you need thirty to fifty responses. If we count the public participation in our online survey, we're at a hundred. Um, again, based on our size of thirty-seven hundred, I mean, it's not bad. It all depends on Planning Commission and council, um, what their recommendation is and what they're seeking. Um, yes, we'd like more input because that will help us direct what the master plan goes and how we can better service the residents of the village. But there too, it's better than no responses. So we're doing good there. Um, we are working with village staff on how we can help promote the online survey as well further. So.
Uh, is there, uh, so you say the survey is available online. Is that available online through uh through the village website? Is there a link on the on the village site that you can go to uh to take that survey?
There has been an email, I know that Mr. Newman sent out. I know we posted it also on social media. We can work further with village staff to ensure that it is out there. Um, I know village staff is looking at asking business owners um for further cooperation. I'll defer to Mr. Mallory on that, but there is that out there as well. Um, looking.
I would just was through there and I didn't, nothing came up on the on the opening, on the uh drop-in page or any of it. I was.
It might be different on the phone setup, but we'll check it in the morning.
Okay. Good, thank you. Uh, and just on on a related note, uh, this is, you started this about a month ago. Uh, I want to say the last two times that we've been through this in the first month, we were at about sixty to seventy uh responses and surveys filled out. So at this point, um, you're significantly ahead of the game uh with response. So uh, I think that 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 speaks fairly well to the amount of interest that people have in seeing where the community is going, especially on the heels of the major redevelopment of downtown and the fact that the village has taken an interest in the village staff uh and associated governing bodies have really decided to, you know, to to take the village in into the next phase. And I I think that uh that the number that you have right now speaks well. I would like to see it a little higher as well. Uh, no reason that, you know, if we can get fifteen percent, that would be fantastic. We're already almost at ten. So.
And Mr. Newman, to your point and Mr. Holmes' point too, um, you know, the past few years, residents and people in general are just so survey burned out. I I mean, you you just, you click on almost anything now and it's take the survey, you know. So the open houses allow us to engage further with residents. It's not, you're not sitting on your phone, but also having the survey is maybe some aren't um as inclined to come out and participate in that kind of open house or want to dialogue face-to-face. So that's a great thing that we um are able to offer both. But, you know, you almost click on everything and there's some survey, any email you sign up for, any business you shop at. There's always a little, hey, here's a five-minute survey. So you become almost numb to them, which is why we're big proponents of these back-to-in-person, get in front of residents, um, going that way. Um, so there's that. Working through this, knowing that we've put this out about a month ago or so, and then working with village staff to increase the response rates, um, just kind of looking ahead, my thought is to come back, um, and we'll work with village staff on this as well in February after we find a target date to end our survey and present the results to the Planning Commission. And at that time, also review the goals and objectives of the master plan because those two will need to tie well together. And then looking out even further from that, we'll uh then dovetail that into the future land use plan, um, which is, it can be a lot of fun. So there'll be a workshop itself as well, in which we'll ask the Planning Commission what direction they think the future of the village needs to go. Um, the future land use map is a guiding document for Planning Commission and for council trustees, boards um in municipalities to determine what that vision of the area is going to be. So this will be kind of fun in the sense that we'll have maps up there, maybe we'll even print some off and you guys can color on them, you know, and we'll go that route and we'll look at it. Um, we'll also present existing land use maps as well. Um, and we'll compare the two to see where development is currently and how we want to track with that. And then that ties into our survey responses of, okay, we've got this survey. We understand that housing's a concern for residents, retail businesses are concerned, there's not enough space. How do we look at that, you know, in ten years from now and five years from now? What does that look like? Um, so that will be also part of probably the early spring project we do in front of the Planning Commission. And then you guys as a recommending body will then eventually make that recommendation to council as well. So. Anything else you'd like me to touch on tonight before? Yeah, sure.
No, I think that's good. We're gonna put you guys through an exercise so we still get your input on the village.
You don't want to do it again?
No, I I I'm all for it.
So what we've done with council, and I didn't bring bring the boards, um, and what we do at the public session is ask for feedback and what that looks like too. And let me grab my pen and paper as well. Um, as we mold this over, I'd like to know initially, um, we have three engagement boards that we did and they are, um, start with fix. What are areas of the town, village you'd like to fix? What are areas that you'd like to keep? And what do you aspire to in the village? Um, so the first one, as I grabbed some stuff to write with, um, I'd like to know what are areas of the village you think need to be improved upon? This is not, you know, hey, Mr. Mallory, never respond to my emails. That's not this kind of fix. This is a, you know, hey, there's not enough housing for seniors in the village. We need, this is something we need to fix. Um, you know, retail sidewalks aren't large enough in the downtown area, examples such as that. Um, so that would be something, um, as this exercise, I'd like to work with you guys on as a planning commission, um, because again, you guys are the recommending body to village council for anything large. So you are the frontrunners of this. So it'd be nice to, we need to get your input as well. So I'll start that with the fix item. Are you looking for? Yes, please. I I want comments. I mean, I'm again, I didn't bring the the boards. It's, we're getting kind of beat up a little bit too from all the events. Um, but yes, I'm I'm looking for comments of, from the Planning Commission of what, you know, broad things, you know, as you as members of the community and as your due diligence on the Planning Mission that you see before you as well, what are areas that need to be fixed? We'll start with the less positive first and then we'll build on the positives. So.
You you're gonna be working on parks and recreation then, correct? Um, making recommendations?
That is a component of our survey. We have tied in there. That is a component of our survey, we have tied in there, that has not been established fully yet with the village.
I was wondering if perhaps the use of the, the recreation area, it seems to be something that is not fully used, utilized, and perhaps something can be looked at to, to get more folks using that property.
And Kyle, to follow, follow up on what Don said, I think through that, that, looking at that, it really would be, what is the change in recreational needs that present residents need versus what we have in place that was developed for earlier, you know, earlier residents, or twenty, thirty, a hundred years ago? Good example, I think, would be Sunset Beach. As a kid, I swam, there was a lifeguard watching me, today, there's no lifeguard and no swimming. Yeah, do, do we need, do we need a beach, something like that, but I, I think that recreational needs have changed, and so, is that reflective of what we're seeing? Or is there, we need, you know, is there things we can do, so, thank you.
Some of the public feedback we've received so far, the open houses, did touch on recreational facilities, but again, it more focused in on the, to an extent, the downtown area, but a village as a whole. I'll tie it though, Mr. Holmes, into this, that we did receive comments both building on the existing non-motorized network within the village, but also to expand it in the sense of creating bike lanes throughout the village as well. So we can dovetail those two together, in a sense, because that is still part of recreational. We've received some comments from the recreational facility itself that the village owns about adding like this golf, you know, some items like that, but this looks at more as a whole, so like bike lanes would focus in as a whole, they're not just limited to a specific region of the village, so. Still all great input, but not, so that's what we're.
If, if I may, on, on the bike lanes, the, the village, probably two or three, maybe four years ago, had a group from MDOT here, looking at road leaning, I think it was, and it was basically to look at restriping the road, say from a four lane to a three lane, and then using that extra pavement for bike lanes. So that's something that perhaps can be looked at through town.
A road diet. Road diet, yep, yes.
Oh, you want things that need to be fixed, that's what you want to do first?
I would, I would like to take the.
What, yes. What I feel needs to be fixed is the entrance when you're coming into town on, on Prairie Street at Sunset Park, or Sunset Bridge, going across. That's quite a popular fishing area, and if we incorporated more of a fishing habitat around that area, because every time you drive by, then summertime, the kids are fishing off the pier there, so, or the, the bridge. And right now, there's a, it's, it's starting to deteriorate, and that's something that needs to be addressed, by the way, so.
Any, any more fix recommendations for Mr. Mucha?
Yep, we're talking about fixing, again, and this is something that, you know, I know is in the existing master plan that would, that I would like to see brought to the forefront in the next one. As you stated in your introduction, we've got approximately twenty percent of our housing stock is rental property. There is zero oversight on the safety and feasibility of that. I, I think that addressing that, getting a registry of what is rental, make sure that the people that are in those, you know, have a safe place to be, you know, that we know that they can get out if there's a fire. That we know that they're breathing safe, you know, clean air, through having carbon monoxide detectors. All of the steps that we can take, I would also, you know, we are short of senior housing, we are short of rental housing. These are all things that as we look towards zoning and land use, things that, that we really need to be aware of. This is, you know, something that's been, you know, in there for the last ten years, and it's still hanging out down here.
I have a, a thought, a Spruce Street out near where the law office is, the pavilion, there's a flooding problem there. And that may be on a county road, I'm not sure where the village authority ends and the county starts, but a couple inches of rain and you get a puddle that's probably a hundred yards long, and I'm not sure how that can be taken care of, but it is a problem spot, there is water, there's potential for crashes due to hydroplaning there.
There was a large system put there in August or September underground, so we're hoping that we won't see that next year.
So Don, you're telling me it's not gonna be named Little Vicksburg Lake? Is that what you're, that what you're telling me? We can't have that in there? Yeah.
I think that name's already taken. To follow up with Mr. Newman's comments, just two, two, and that is blight, residential and, and commercial, I think, is a continued issue for us, and also absentee landlords. It would be, it would be interesting to see what, what latitude the village has in enforcing absentee landlords' hands, and taking more of an ownership as, as we see our, our commercial base growing as far as the, the tax base.
Yeah. So then, in order of time, Mr. Mallory's asked if we could come back and present the boards, engagement boards, that we have done at village council and the public sessions with you guys, I have no problem with that, it may be of more benefit. Doing it this way tonight saved me from having to transpose all your sticky notes into a document, but no, it's fine. That way it gives you a better sense too of what the community's been doing as well, we'll have engagement boards up there too. I know with rooms set up, I, I wanted to have more of an open flow with you guys too, but happy to do that next meeting as well, gets you some ideas. So those include fix, keep, and aspire. There's also an engagement board we have too, that talks about the downtown area, and it is a strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats board. So we ask for your input on that as well. And then further from that, we also have a visual preference board for housing styles. And we have everything on there from the apartment, three, four-story apartment complexes, to bungalow courts, to large ranch-style homes as well. Those from our public engagement sessions so far have been a complete just scatter, there's really been no consistent winner in all three sessions. So which is a benefit to us in the village, that there, it seems that residents are open to all types of housing style, and we're not set on a specific brand. There's a few that obviously get less votes or less inclination than others, but as we move forward, that helps us in the master plan as well know that, you know, the village's welcoming of housing style changes, so.
Kyle, would it be best for us to submit a survey? Is there a digital form that you would like us to maybe work on for next meeting, to give us a little bit of time to consider this some more, and also give you some thoughtful responses?
Sure. So the online survey that the village has posted right now, goes a little bit more in-depth of the visual preferences, the styles that you'd like, other aspects of the village that could use improvement, and I have more pointed questions on there. The engagement that we'll do next month with you focuses more on the broader picture of the village itself, and is intended to be more of a dialogue like we had tonight with the fix in that regard. So the survey, Mr. Schenkel, would be beneficial to us, if you could promote that as well with other family members. I know, I think it only allows you to do one per device, so a household could do two votes as well per device on that, so. So looking forward, we'll do that in turn of the year. Hopefully then come February, we'll have the input from the public engagement sessions to present in raw data format to the planning commission. Nothing will be crunched yet, but at least it gets you an idea of what residents and those who've taken it are considering. Then looking at that, probably come March, we'll do a working session on goals and objectives, after we've had time to kind of take a month or so and analyze the response rates. April, I'm thinking let's focus in on your future land use, and that's kind of really gonna be how we can, you know, drive the input we've received from residents and those who come to the village. And then potentially, if all things hold constant, the meeting in May would then be a presentation to you of the draft master plan. And at that time, we'd ask for a recommendation to village council that they then accept it for public comment. State law requires a sixty-three day public comment period, so after village council does approve it for publication to public comment, then we're looking at potentially August then, coming back as, making any tweaks based on any additional comments we receive. That will go out to the surrounding municipalities, Brady Township, Schoolcraft Township, we send it to the rail company as well, Consumers Energy, AEP. So far, we've gotten nothing. I believe we also sent a notice to Portage Utilities, because we do share with them, just so they understand what our goal is on that. Received no comments so far as well, so, and then potentially August, September for adoption of the master plan. And then so, based on those public comments, those do come back to the planning commission. Subject to any additional changes the planning commission may have at that time, it would then be a recommendation from planning commission to village council to accept the master plan, so. Questions, I know that's a lot to digest, and I appreciate Mr. Mallory's thought of coming back next month to do the exercise with you guys. But I still want to give you an overview, and I'm grateful he invited me here tonight to do that with you, to talk about our demographics and kind of where the initial responses are in the surveys and public engagement, so. It just means I gotta store those boards for another month in my house.
Thanks, Mr. Mucha, I look forward to going through this process. Okay, next item on our agenda for the evening is Downtown Development Authority, and back to Mr. Mallory for DDA finances.
Yeah, the finances are in, in very good shape, there's an, most of the expenditures we've talked about here tonight are all within the fundraising on the Christmas and the village event. But we do have one request for approval, and that's up to thirty-five hundred dollars that would be invested in the Vicksburg Iceberg Event in February in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And like I said, our goal there is again to utilize those dollars in a manner that it's designed to be used to create walking traffic throughout our downtown during that event, which hopefully impacts our retail establishments in a very positive manner, but I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Jim, as far as the, the cost is concerned, I, I could be wrong on this, but I, I was talking with another chamber member, and they mentioned that, that the person who's doing the ice sculpture offered part of their services, they offered this at a heavily discounted rate, is that, is that correct?
I've talked to the gentleman, this comes through my conversation with the person who's gonna put on the live demonstration.
Okay.
And it's an amount not to, to, to exceed, so hopefully it comes in less, but.
Further questions? Right? Is this a, a motion that you're seeking for this?
Yeah, I'm seeking a motion support, it's above a thousand dollars and, per our bylaws.
Let's, Member Newman, make a motion to approve up to thirty-five hundred dollars for six to eight ice sculptures to be placed around the village for the Iceberg Festival on February eleventh.
I, I'd like to clarify and get feedback from you, because we would ultimately use DDA money on these festivals. If, if the up to thirty-five hundred dollars allows enough leeway above and beyond the ice sculptures, I'd purchase those large rubber-made trash cans for festivals, if it can end up coming into. I think that'll be a, below a thousand dollars actually, so I have authority to, and can report back on that, but.
Yeah, we, so maybe we can come back to that, we have a motion on the table to discuss, do we have support for that motion?
Yes, Manchester, I support that motion.
All right, any further discussion on this item, on this motion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote on this, Secretary Cox.
Zach Bishop? Yes. Cox, yes, down to Bolt? Rick Holmes?
Yes.
Rick Manchester?
Yes.
Chris Newman?
Yes. 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 Thank you.
So you're.
I'm not worried about the other, it'll be less than a thousand dollars, which just be reported back.
Great. Okay. All right, on to member comments, any member comments for this evening? Just once again to Mr. Mallory and his staff, congrats on another successful event. It's fantastic to see that level of activity happening in our village, and you're truly making it a destination. All right, the time is eight oh one, we are dismissed, thank you.